This special meeting was called for Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall located at 77 Summer Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey, pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-8B. The public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the Spotswood website and in the Home News Tribune. I would like to welcome the elected officials and residents present at this meeting this evening for a reorganization meeting for the Borough of Spotswood for the year 2024. Councilman Lustow.
There it is.
Councilwoman Zaborni.
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Here.
Councilman Legakis.
Here.
Councilwoman Kramer.
Here.
Mayor Palmer.
Here.
Councilmembers, I'll take the nomination for council president.
Make a nomination of Nick, uh, for council president. Yeah, I'm all right.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I declare the nominations for council president closed. Uh, council members, I will do a roll call to elect Nick Legakis as council president. Councilman Lustow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Zaborni.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Legakis.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kramer.
Yes.
I will now swear in, uh, council president. I. I'm out of here. I.
I. Nick with that.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance. To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of council president.
Of council president of the Borough of Spotswood.
According to my vestment.
According to my vestment. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, council members. Um, at this time, um, do we have to open to the public? So I will make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
My house?
No, it's not working. Of course not.
There's all congratulations for the council of Spotswood. Long congratulations on the service. Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions regarding, um, the room, just for your keys.
We, that'll be yours.
That'll be the next?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, this is just to finish the reading.
No, I'll hold it.
Okay. Make a motion to close to the public.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to turn around a little bit?
Somebody wanted to come up though. This gentleman right there started to get us. Yeah, I'm not great. This is, uh. If, to congratulate the council president. Uh, Robert Soder, let me go to the correct side as well. I want to talk about flying. Yeah, we're gonna, what, what, that, that'll be during the regular meeting. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No problem. Thank you.
Is there any way we can get that mic for stuff?
Yeah, we gotta use the mic thing. That's ridiculous.
Check the floor.
That one? All right.
We've only checked the floor.
No, that's perfect. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Charles. Those are stuff. Oh. Rooted out. Darn mice. Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilmembers, I'll take a motion to adjourn the.
Make a motion to adjourn the reorganization meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting was called for Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall located at 77 Summer Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey, pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-8B. The public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the Spotswood website and in the Home News Tribune.
Councilman Lustow.
Here.
Councilwoman Zaborni.
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Here.
Councilwoman Kramer.
Here.
Council President Legakis.
Here.
Mayor Palmer.
Here.
All right, we'll start off with the engineer report.
Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year. Uh, I have nothing to add since the December 15th report.
Okay. Any council members have any questions about the engineer, uh, fit engineer? Okay, thank you. All right, we have resolutions under the present agenda. Whenever you're ready.
We have a resolution 2024-1, resolution to appoint council president. 2024-2, our temporary budget. 2024-3, tax collector empowered to allow a 33-day grace period for billing date of an, of all utility bills and authorized to charge 8% per annum interest up to $1,500 and 18% per annum over $1,500 on all delinquent utility bills. 2024-4, Borough Council to authorize the treasurer to make such investments of public funds of the Borough of Spotswood on hand and not need, not needed temporarily in any insured association or federal association in such principal office or branch office up to the amount of which such accounts are insured. 2024-5, Borough Council to fix a penalty to be charged to a taxpayer with a delinquency in excess of $10,000 of all taxes, water, sewer, and municipal charges who fails to pay the delinquency prior to the end of the calendar year. The penalty so fixed shall not exceed 6% of the amount of the delinquency. 2024-6, tax collector is empowered to allow 10-day grace period for payment of municipal taxes and assessments without incision of any interest charges in the event that the taxes and assessments are not paid on due dates and within this grace period and become delinquent. The tax collector is authorized to charge 8% of the num interest up to $1,500 and 18% of the num over $1,500. 2024-7, Jose Riveros hereby appointed a member of the Housing and Community Development Committee for the year 2024. 2024-8, Mayor Palmer is hereby authorized to sign any of all permits and applications with the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. 2024-9, Business Administrator, Brandon Zumpa, be designated as the Borough of Spotswood's Public Agency Compliance Officer for the year 2024. 2024-10, Resolution authorizing an annual tax sale by the tax collector. 2024-11, Borough Council give advice and consent as to enable Wendy Rochford to serve as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator as appointed by Mayor Palmer for a one-year period commencing January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. 2024-12, Resolution authorizing the CFOs pay certain vouchers where required. 2024-13, council may participate in a council meeting and cast a vote for or against an ordinance or resolution on the council agenda by telephonic conference call in order to complete required actions for the year 2024. 2024-14, Resolution to authorize the cancellation of underpayments and/or overpayments under $10. 2024-15, Councilman Kramer is hereby appointed a liaison for council as Class 3 member of the Planning Board, Zone, slash zoning board of adjustments for the year 2024. 2024-16, Resolution authorizing the tax assessor to file appeals and execute stipulations of settlement on behalf of Borough of Spotswood. 2024-17, Resolution awarding contracts slash purchase orders to Onsite Plate Services, Inc. for maintenance and repairs for heavy-duty vehicles. 2024-18, Resolution designating the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger as the official newspapers. 2024-19, Resolution appoints a town commissioner. 2024-20, Resolution, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for the Borough Watering Services. 2024-21, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for Bond Council Legal Services. 2024-22, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for Borough Attorney Legal Services. 2024-23, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for Labor Council Legal Services. 2024-24, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for Tax Attorney Legal Services. 2024-25, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for redevelopment legal services. 2024-26, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for prosecutor legal services. 2024-27, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for public defense or legal services. 2024-28, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for special counsel legal services. 2024-29, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for Borough Engineer Services. 2024-30, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contracts for Borough Planning Services. 2024-31, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for grant consulting services. And 2024-32, Resolution authorizing the execution of a non-fair and open contract for risk management and insurance broker services.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open to the public.
Second. Call of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public comment portion of the Spotswood Borough Council meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their concerns or comments in according with NJSA 10:4-12A as, as well as Spotswood Borough Ordinances 218 and 219. Except upon consent of the council president, each person addressing the council in the case of a resolution shall limit their remarks to three minutes and in the case of an ordinance, shall limit their remarks to five minutes total for the meeting. No person shall direct any remark or question to any specific council member except by permission of the council president. Any council member through the council president may choose to answer a question, but they're not obligated to do so. All persons wishing to address the council shall do so from the podium or another location specified by the council president. Each person addressing the council must identify themselves by name and address. If said person is representing a business or organization, they shall further state whether their comments are their personal view or those of a group they represent. So at this time, anything that has to do with the, uh, resolutions that are, um, on the agenda, you may come up and speak about that. Anything else, we will, uh, address during the regular meeting. And the engineer.
Hi. I'm in Rockville, Alvin Road. What is the reason for changing it from the way that we normally did it to this non-fair and open? We've never done that before in all years, I don't care. Is there a reason why we changed that?
I believe the mayor mentioned that it was done in 2022.
Uh, I did some research online and I had called the election board. And I was informed that when you have a non-fair and open contract, that anybody that is, um, with those non-fair and open contracts, so any of the people that we're gonna bring on can have contributed to the mayor's campaign within the last 365 days. The issue with that is that there's no paperwork online. Last time the mayor filed paperwork was in October 2020. So there's no expenditures. And there's no contribution. So we don't know if anybody in these non-fair and open contracts donated to the mayor because there's no paperwork online. When I called the election board, they told me that she's still considered candidate because she is the mayor. And as such, she's supposed to be filing quarterly reports. So I don't know if that's something that we should be looking into before we decide that when we go through the non-fair and open contracts to people that we don't know whether or not contributed to her campaign in the last 365 days.
Council President, I can answer. So under, under the New Jersey election, uh, law, it states that if you, uh, you receive $6,500 or more in contributions, then you file a quarterly report. If you're under $6,500, then file an A3 form, um, stating that you, you did and that you, you haven't accepted any contribution. I don't believe that there's a requirement to have to file a report.
Okay, but there's been no expenditures either. And there's been nothing since October 2020. So you're telling me she spent nothing on her campaign? And that she hasn't spent anything since that time?
I can't answer that. I have no knowledge of the mayor's campaign. I just answered the law with the law of commerce.
So I have not taken any, I'll answer your question. I have not taken any donations from any of our professionals during my tenure as mayor. I have not taken any donations actually since I've been mayor. And the, one of the very reasons that I purposely wanted to do a non-fair open as I did in the last election year that we had here was precisely for that reason that even going forward, no one can take a donation from any of our professionals, even in their campaign this year. So councilman, anybody running for council, the council seat that opens, the mayor's seat that opens, we cannot accept donations from any of our professionals. And I purposely did that during the 2022 year, election year, so that there was no, nobody could say, well, the only reason that, that they were appointed is they gave money. So now no one can, no, none of these professionals can donate to anybody. But you had no problem taking the money before you were elected, Max? Well, before I was elected mayor, not, those professionals were not on the, and, and any money that was given to me was not reportable from any of our professionals. It was. It was reported in online in October of 2020. Yeah, that I, and that I got, who did I think donation from? Understate and from Jack Kramer. Right. And so that was recorded. And I did not have any, anything to do with who was on the schedule at that time. Okay, but there's been no expenditures? Um, expenditures, I have not spent, yeah, there's, I, there's a form that gets filled out that said if I do not spend, if I do not spend more than $6,500, is it right?
I believe it's the accepting of, was it $6,500? I don't, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know the expenditure. I do know that your seven donations. Excess of $6,500 must be taken.
Right. Which I didn't, but reported what I got. But the expenditures aren't there either? Well, the expenditures, there was a form that A, I believe it's an A3 and it says if you don't spend more than $5,400 on the campaign, which all of the other, um, council people also have done. If you didn't spend more than that money, you didn't, you don't have to report. Okay, 'cause that's not what the elect board told me today. Well. I mean, that's whatever. I just find it really interesting that we've always done it another way and now we're doing it this way. And you want to maintain the exact same people, even though there's been tremendous controversy with those people in this town. And considering we spent astronomical amounts of money on attorney's fees and special investigations. More so, and, and not for nothing, Jackie used to stand right here at this podium and bitch the same bitch on bitching nap. But yet, we paid Vicky $158,000 this year so far today. And had excessive amounts of special investigators. Non-fair and open? More like the Jack Pana Way being a subject figure to the entire town.
While we're on, Diane Charles, 29th and State Road. While we're on the subject of what we paid to attorneys, one of the reasons that Mr. Palmer decided to make Vicky Flynn our borough and later attorney was to save us money. So, um, because I'm a pack rat and I have bills that go back to 2019 and did some research this weekend and discovered that in 2020 during Ed Sealy's administration, our total fees for lawyers were $100,000, $107,66,017. That was paid to Senator Dignan, Larry Sachs, and Anna Abramson. In 2022, we paid Victoria Flynn $128,645.80. Um, and plus a gift payment for the year for $441,950. Four payments of $110,487. In 2023, we had a banner for lawyer's fees. All told, we paid $411,051.60. That included $153,892 to Victoria Flynn only through September because we have not received her bills for October, November, and December. Uh, the Raynone, uh, law firm, we paid $14,000 plus. The Hatfield Firm, we paid $34,000 plus. And Parker McKay, we paid $33,000 plus. But we started the year off with a bang by paying $175,000 to Skiarra and Katrambone to cover a lawsuit filed by a police officer. And our gift payment this year was $468,467,000. Four payments of $117,116,117.75. So, tell me where the savings are, Mayor.
I'm not gonna discuss any, any.
Tell me where the savings are.
Well.
That is your whole premise of nature.
I'm gonna be, Ms. Charles, I'm gonna be very honest with you.
Oh, that's true.
95% of the reason that we had to have special investigators is very much the reason of what you have said, what others have stood up here and said publicly in which we then had to look at each other and say, how does that information get out? From who is that? You. How does, oh, okay. How does that particular information? And so then a special investigation needs to be opened up in order to, to do that. So unfortunately.
Why do you have the lawsuits to begin with?
What?
Now the reason's on your part?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, how many lawsuits are we talking about? How many?
Three or four at this point and one coming down the pipe real, real close.
For me?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that we have three open lawsuits at this moment in time.
Okay, like I said, three or four.
Two were rolled over from the prior administration. And one is on this administration. No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. Okay, so what are we gonna do? Are we gonna continue to bleed money to her? I hope not.
Good evening, Joe Bryan, 11 Hudson Avenue. Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I did have a question about one of the resolutions, 2024-25, where we're going over 20, continue the appointment of redevelopment council. I guess it's really two questions. With the Giant Warehouse project completed, um, what's the rationale to have redevelopment attorney continue? And I guess the second part of the question is, is there another major project contemplated? Is there another section of land in the town ripe for redevelopment? If that's something we can discuss.
I, I can answer.
Could you talk into the mic, please? Thank you.
The redevelopment, uh, council is still engaged in a number of items with the, uh, with the warehouse. One being the water rights have not been completely, uh, signed over because of the DDP approval. So that's one active item that I know that Mr. Ash is, is handling for us. Um, there still will probably be a closeout once the building is completed to make sure that it is in compliance with the redevelopment agreement that the, the town agreed to. Um, that would require them to do a review. Um, that would be after Center State signed off because Center State's doing all the, um, inspection reviews at this present time. But you would probably, I would say, once the project is fully completed, then you might not need redevelopment council. Um, but right now, there, those would be the two items that I would say that they're still actively engaged in.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question? So then if that was to happen and the project was fully completed, you would recommend to us, you would let us know that so that if we wanted to decide to do another resolution, that's how that would work?
It, it's either you just don't have them do the work and then the contract, uh, expires at the end of the year. Professional services contracts are not allowed to exceed an annual basis. So you have to then re, so you either decide not to renew. Um, but I also, I believe Carlin is also our tax attorney, uh, uh, maybe so that falls into that, uh, category as well.
So he would stay on as tax attorney for the year, but he wouldn't be billing for the redevelopment if the project was done.
His bills will come in monthly, are separated between tax purposes. Um, if he's doing a tax appeal to, to a business or resident in, in town and then separately is, is redevelopment. Oh, yeah, redevelopment council fees get paid by the, that's, that is.
And it is no other major.
Project, unless we're gonna do a new project.
I'm sorry, interrupt.
The second part of the question is no other major project contemplated for redevelopment.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Happy New Year. Ed Sealy, Indiana Street, Spotswood, New Jersey. A couple minor questions. Um, behind, we're redoing a tax attorney, right? And we do a tax attorney for taxes because that's your specialty, right? Same as almost most any attorney, just like you wouldn't take your car as a mechanic or a doctor. Well, and we can agree upon the fact that some lawyers are more specialized in certain fields. That is my only concern, only one requirement. And that would be labor attorney and borough attorney because I believe labor attorney is a very important part. And the person who knows labor law is a lot more extensive than a regular attorney in that field. You know, if you went to a doctor to work on your heart, I'm gonna say a doctor to work on your brain. That's my one concern, concern with that. I'm thinking that that should be a different way. Uh, other thing is I saw on your temporary budget, there's another question from another field. Page 15, 17. You have bond payments, bond loan payment, and bond interest twice. Is that two different bonds, two different interests?
So bonds would be the, the bond notes that you have that are long-term notes. Um, you did not put into anything with notes. That would be a ban payment, temporary financing. Um, and then you have the MCI loans with interest. So that's, that's a separate, I believe it's an infrastructure, uh, loan. And then at the bottom is NJDIT Principal Interest, which is a, um, a loan that the town, not for in a storm or a replacement. I would have to look at it, but we, we still have, uh, payments in our debt. in a storm or a replacement, I'd have to look at it, but we, we still have, uh, payments in our debt service, uh, skin.
First, let me say, thank you for looking at me in your expert. Well, I do appreciate that. I mean, I get when you talk to the council, but most of what you say to the council before they sit up there and say, okay, we're doing this, that, that conversation should have been had already. Okay, so when you talk to them, not the person up here, just a piece of advice, it's just a little bit, so.
Technically, I'm supposed to address.
I understand, I'm gonna, I'm sure the council president could direct you if he would, talk to the public, because I just'll leave you with one more thing. I'll lose an add, uh, say the rest for the next part of me.
Council President, just so that you know, under the law, the temporary budget is a twenty-six point two-five percent of the prior year budget. However, debt service payments, you can put the complete amount in, uh, so that, uh, that's an exemption from the twenty-six point two-five. So that, that total amount, uh, I believe Natasha said that was the full amount for, for debt service, but that, that can exceed the twenty-six point two-five percent. Thank you.
Make a motion to close to the public?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. But recess? This meeting was called for Wednesday, January third, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty PM at Pearl Hall located at seventy-seven Summer Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey. Pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, N J S A ten, four dash eight B. The public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the sponsor website and in the home news review.
Councilman Lesko?
Here.
Councilwoman Kramer?
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni?
Here.
Council President Legakis?
Here.
Mayor Palmer?
Here.
Just everyone, please rise. So in the play. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In search of our, of our success, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President, Councilmember, I'll send a motion to adopt resolutions. I'll take a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty-four dash one through twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Were we doing a roll call on the resolutions, is that what you meant, Mr.?
Yeah. Does what, roll call came out of the plan?
Right. So we had to send a little bit of, right?
Okay.
So I'd like to do a roll call on, um, resolutions twenty-four dash twenty-two, twenty-four dash twenty-three, and twenty-four dash twenty-eight. Please.
So you need the most from the, from the twenty twenty-four dash one. So I'll, uh, take, I'll accept a motion, uh, to approve resolutions twenty twenty-four dash one through twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four through twenty twenty-four dash seven, twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine through twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
I'll make a motion to accept resolutions under consent agenda, twenty twenty-four dash one through twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four through twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, and then twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine through twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
Seconded.
Councilman Lesko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kramer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni?
Yes.
And Council President Legakis?
Yes.
Okay, so I will take a motion to adopt twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two?
Second. Councilman Lesko?
No.
Councilwoman Kramer?
No.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
No.
Councilman Zaborni?
No.
And Council President Legakis?
No.
Council President, Councilmembers, I'll take a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Make a motion to adopt twenty twenty, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Seconded.
Councilman Lesko?
No.
Councilwoman Kramer?
No.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
No.
Councilman Zaborni?
No.
And Council President Legakis?
No.
Council President, Councilmembers, I'll take a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight.
Seconded.
Councilman Lesko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kramer?
No.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
No.
Councilman Zaborni?
No.
And Council President Legakis?
No. At this time, I would like to ask any of the council members if they'd like to make any comments, who's thought of, Councilwoman Schwartz?
Okay. Hello, everybody, happy new year. Um, I'd like to start with the Office of Aging and just send out an apology to them. Um, I really was not well in the month of December. And, um, as, as I was invited to the holiday party and the pajama party, unfortunately, I was not able to make it. So I have not been able to get over there the entire month of December, so I just wanted to apologize for that. Um, the Office of Aging will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth for the observance of Hart Luther King Junior Day. Every Friday, there is a Medicare counselor available, so please call to make an appointment. There will be a skin cancer screening on Wednesday, January seventeenth from ten to one, and you also must make an appointment for that in advance. Please call to do that. Please be advised that there will be no activities on Wednesdays at the Office of Aging beginning February seventh, going all the way through April tenth. For A A R P will be present to assist with tax preparation. Please call the Office of Aging as soon as possible, um, to make an appointment, I know they fill up fast. Um, the library will be hosting their totally awesome eighties party modeled for American Girl doll Courtney, and that will be on a Saturday, January thirteenth. Bring your dolls, your stuffed animals, and your eighties fashion for some fun dance party, um, and activities, but registration is required, please go to spotslibrary.org, S P O T S library.org. And my favorite program, Reball, Paws Up For Reading, will be on Saturday, January twentieth, like, at ten thirty. Um, again, I miss my furry friends as well, so I look forward to getting back to that. And I have nothing for the rough department at this time, so happy new year.
Yeah, I have, uh, I have some things I want to talk about. Um, not too long ago, my wife had a very serious problem and I called nine-one-one. Um, the three officers that showed up, Patrolman Tyler Campbell, Sergeant Tony, I think it's Tony, or James Parsons, and Sergeant Dan Hoover, um, calmed my wife down, took care of her, were very polite. Uh, Sergeant Hoover stood by me to make sure I wasn't gonna freak out. Um, and the other two officers spoke to my wife and, um, had a, um, some oxygen on hand. Um, after they came, um, our EMS, uh, department showed up. Pat Burns and Jeremy Frito, uh, took care of my wife. Um, talked to her and then, uh, kept her as calm as they could get her. And then, um, the paramedics showed up and they took over. We did transport her to Robert Wood Johnson and, uh, she turned out okay, we spent a couple hours there. Um, so I wanted to make sure that these people get recognized, um, because I don't think any, any department gets recognized enough. Um, they did a fantastic job, the police were, um, very professional, um, very concerned about my wife. And so was our EMS department and the paramedics, and I've already called the paramedic's boss and spoke to them also. So I just wanted them to get some recognition. That's it for me.
Would you mind doing that in the mail out to our office, please, so we may put that letter and have you sign it as well?
Not a problem. I most certainly will.
Councilman Lesko? Yep, happy new year, everybody. Just a couple of non-borough business first tomorrow. There's a county reorganization at Middlesex County College, or excuse me, just Middlesex College now. Uh, I think that's at four thirty-five, not sure if I'm gonna go, but if I do go, maybe I'll see a couple of you there. And on Sunday is something pretty cool, I think, that might get snowed out. It's the two hundred and forty-seventh anniversary of the Battle of Princeton, and they're doing the reenactment. I think that's nine AM on Mercer Road at the site there. Uh, like I said, I haven't seen it get snowed out, or at least rained out, but the, the British do lose still. No, um, and then lastly, is borough business, indoor soccer starts in a couple of weeks, and I've mentioned on Coach App. So if I don't mention it again, my teams may not be winning, but I'm excited nonetheless. So thank you, and see you all in a few weeks.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year, everybody. I'm glad you mentioned the Middlesex County reorg for tomorrow, I had plans to attend that. Uh, so a lot of good things happening, Culture Heritage will be, uh, meeting at the end of the month, uh, the last Thursday, so going to, in the last Thursday each month, uh, to do so, seven PM at the V F W. Last night, I was at the Spotwood Board of Education reorganization meeting, a lot of good things coming down the pike at, uh, Spotswood Schools. And as always, uh, I like to, uh, talk about St. Peter's, uh, shocked they're back in business over there after the holiday break, so check them out as well. Uh, Spotwood Brown, happy new year.
Mayor?
Happy New Year. Um, we did miss you, John, at the Office of Aging. Um, I did attend the, the holiday party that they had, um, and was fortunate enough to serve, um, all of the residents that were there. And I did get to stay in Miami's, um, last Wednesday, when we run the, it's a new year, um, at twelve o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, it was a great event, it was a lot of fun, we played games, and everybody was in their pajamas, so that's always a good day for me. Um, and that's all I have.
Uh, I just have two things I, I want to mention, I just want to congratulate Brandon on the birth of his son. So congratulate him, see you anyway. And I also want to congratulate our clerk, Jenny, on passing her, uh, first, uh, group of, actually all of her tests, and now going for certification in the springtime, so.
We're all in four months on top of that, all those classes completed in four months.
Yes. Uh, this time, I would like to make a motion to open to the public.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. At this time, you can go up and speak about anything that's concerning, not just what's on the agenda. Robert Sawyer, one ninety-seven Willett Clark Circle. Uh, I'm here to talk about the flooding on Willett Clark Circle that's still going on. I think it was the eighteenth of December, we got flooded again. Ditch that was built by the town and supposed to be maintained by the town, it is flooding our property. And I met with the engineer, Kevin Mead, and, uh, he had some good ideas, but I'd like to see something getting done so it stops.
Sure.
You know, he had an idea of, of tying it into the, uh, the sewer system on Willett Clark Circle. That's where the water ends up anyway, it just goes to the yards instead of filling right into the sewer system. So I just want to keep it on the agenda, see if we can get something done. We, actually, just so you know, uh, I was over at Center State today and, and we talked a little bit about, uh, some of the things that they can present to the mayor to, uh, to see what we can, to do to, to, to take care of the issues that are flooding over Willett Clark and, and also some other areas around the town, so. Uh, I don't know, Ernie, you were talking a little bit more about that?
Sure, sure, and, uh, and Public Works, uh, was, uh, was at that meeting as well, and, and they are gonna continue their efforts to, uh, to clear that ditch and maintain an open flow through that area. In fact, um, Council President had a good idea of letting residents that have properties that back to that, both in Spotswood and these Springswood, to let them know that, uh, that they have responsibility to, uh, make sure they don't allow debris from their property to get washed into that ditch. Um, it's heavily.
Or thrown into that ditch.
Or thrown into the ditch, it's, it's heavily wooded, it's not always obvious until there's a flooding event, and then the material gets washed downstream. And, and as we know, we get some flooding between the homes and into the, uh, into the roadway. Uh, so they'll be back out there, uh, those notices will go out in the next couple of weeks. Public Works, uh, would like to get out there sometime in February or March to continue, uh, clearing that ditch and opening that back up. We think that that will help, uh, to, to some degree. Uh, and to, uh, expand upon what you had mentioned during your meeting with Kevin Mead. Uh, that is one of the things that, uh, we, uh, we are considering, uh, perhaps being able to capture when the water does exceed the level of the ditch, to capture that water and get it into the storm system in, uh, the roadway now. Uh, and it's something that I brought to the mayor's attention and, uh, and to Brandon's attention, as we talk about capital budget for, uh, for this upcoming year. There's, I hear something that, uh, will require funding to be put in place, it'll require D E P permitting, uh, because we'll be modifying the, uh, what they consider the natural flow of water as it exists today. Uh, and then thirdly, uh, our Public Works Director had, uh, had asked if my department could, uh, take a look at the basin near their facility to see if, uh, perhaps we could utilize that existing basin to, uh, slow down the water that's coming through that area.
It's got some of it.
Right, some of it does head.
Reduce, reduce, and let it go slowly.
Right. And, and that's something we're gonna take a closer look at, uh, that, that will be a, uh, a taller hurdle to get over, over at N J D E P. Um, but it's something to, to consider, another way of, uh, reducing the amount of flow during heavy rain events. So it, it's front and center, uh, we were talking about it on Wednesday.
Okay, I appreciate the help, and just, just waiting for the big rain and have a dry property.
Um, can I, can I ask a question as well, since I am on this email chain and I've been working on this with Mrs. Kreis and Mr. Sawyer since the summer? Um, Mr. Mayor had indicated that he was gonna take the excavator back out sometime before the end of twenty twenty-three, in that month of December. Has he done that yet? Does anybody know?
I, yeah, I believe today he mentioned that he was back out there, uh, did some work, uh, and then plans to complete his work, uh, in, in February or March.
In February or March?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and his reasoning is, uh, he's waiting for, uh, the cold weather to come through. Apparently, there's a lot of ticks and, uh, animals that are in that area, and the flood process was, since he's going back there. Some of it will be on that equipment, a lot of it has to be done by hand.
Okay.
And he's, he's really waiting for the, the cold to come through and then get out there right, right after that.
And that was the explanation that was given to me, but he had did, he did indicate to me that he was gonna take machinery back out and try again before January, so I wasn't sure if he had actually.
He had, he had, he had done some of that work.
Okay.
And, and even though the, the December rain, uh, December eighteenth rain event, uh, of course, he wanted to come between the homes and enter into the street, uh, it, it looked like there was some improvement, it was with regards to quantity. The level of flooding that was experienced down the street during that particular rain event, and that was, uh, after the work of, of Public Works.
Right, so that's why I was asking, I just want to track how things are going, which time they go out there.
But they are gonna take that machine back out again.
Okay.
He didn't, he was not able to do all the work that he, he hoped to complete.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good, Cheryl, so impressed in having you. I'm here basically for the same thing as this gentleman just spoke about.
I'm here basically for the same thing as this gentleman just spoke about. We've lived there since nineteen fifty-seven. In nineteen fifty-seven, two months after we moved in, we were completely flooded out. We've been flooded on and off since nineteen fifty-seven. The, the retention pond that's been built up there, if any of you have ridden past it or taken a look at it, have some pictures. The thing is all completely reforested. All the tall field grass dies off, goes into the outlets of it, dams this up. The Knights of Columbus ditch was cleaned out by the borough with the leaves and everything. They usually do a great job, this last fall, they blew all the leaves up onto the Knights of Columbus lawn, didn't collect them. And the next day the wind blew them all back in the ditch. But the uh pipe that runs underneath Crescent Avenue. At the Knights of Columbus has been collapsed for years. When they did the improvements, number of years ago on Crescent Avenue with the sidewalks and all that. I asked CME if they would repair the pipe, they said they weren't going to. Ridiculous, they tore the whole road out but wouldn't repair the pipe. So we have that problem there. The ditch has never been maintained. That comes down from Second Avenue, long, parallel with Brunswick Avenue. It, it's completely all, all uh organic material has built it up, now it's only like about two feet deep. It's, it's higher at the outfall going underneath Crescent Avenue than uh where it goes under. The, the pipe that goes from middle of my house all the way back to Cedar Brook. That is caving in in my backyard. Uh there's no, there's just no maintenance. And they came down the other day after the rain that we had, they cleaned off the, the. Storm sewer with all the leaves on it at the Knights of Columbus and the next one up. And the one that was causing all the flooding with my cross street neighbors, uh yards were flooded. It's still to this day right now, covered with leaves and not allowing any flow. They, they drove right past them, okay? So the outfall that goes into the park on the other side has trees with caliper, maybe twelve inches now. Cause that's getting all reforested on, on that side. A number of years ago with the last BA here, I took them through Willard Clark Circle and like that gentleman. They, they mow their lawns and everything else and all garbage and everything, they throw it in the, in the Crescent Avenue ditch. It goes down, goes down to Adirondack ditch there and where it goes under the railroad. We've never been able, I was on the Adhaq Committee under Barry Zagnum. For years going up to these stupid meetings at Middlesex County and couldn't get a damn thing done for the flooding here. The, the pipe that goes underneath uh the railroad is too small, that's where the weirder is for all the flooding that we have. All the water comes out of East Brunswick, goes into Spotswood and is never allowed to go back out. Um but I have a suggestion, you're not maintaining the, the detention pond behind the borough yard and on Crescent Avenue. That, and like I said, it's reforested like crazy. Not to spend the money to go in, but I don't know if you's ever, we're down five twenty-two. Where Molly Pitcher well is, the forest, the forestry service does controlled burns on all those historic fields down there. You could do the same thing with the forestry service and Spotswood Fire Department's brush truck. They burn that off every year, they do it on a controlled basis, they burn about five, six feet. I know about this stuff, I'm a, I'm a life member of Spotswood First Aid Squad. I was a mobilization director for twenty years in Middlesex County in the fourteenth district. For, for New Jersey State First Aid Council. So I, I know about controlled burns and what they can possibly do there. Where it wouldn't be to put a machine in there to cut the grass, harvest it and everything else, to burn it off every year. I noticed there's houses close by, doesn't matter, that's a, it's a controlled burn, they're there with hoes, they burn about the area. Uh right here and then they move on and you just keep doing it and all that field grass is faking out. Trees you got in there, that was never supposed to be a forest, it's a detention pond. That protect us downstream. There's more, more building going on up Brunswick Avenue, the, the, the Moser Temple, I'm not sure which one is. And that all up there, any building that's above Crescent Avenue, county did when that uh top homes was done. They were supposed to be assessed for downstream improvements. We got about twenty-five thousand dollars years ago for that one development that was up there. And they used it over on Sommerdale area for the flooding there. I used to attend all these meetings, I stopped with, just because of the flooding on Crescent Avenue. But I stopped because I went to work for Monrooke Township and I didn't wanna have a conflict and I retired, so I'm back and I'm watching them, okay? So I, if you'd like, I, I'll give you these photographs, you can look at them yourselves. Of the, of the condition of the detention pond, it's terrible and nothing has been done, nothing. It's, it's just awful like that, that this has become, there was never a damn bond with Easter found building up there. He got away with murder with it, with the whole damn thing up there. And, and, and it's, it's just, uh, it's just been a mess ever since.
Mr. Fitzgerald, after the meeting, if you can stick around, we can take down your information and uh, you know, try to.
I've been an expert on this flooding, the reason why, a couple of things for your own edification, okay? We lucked out with this last rainstorm, the one that was a couple of weeks before it wasn't as bad. Here's the big thing why we lucked out, because of the duration of the rain, okay? It came down maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, then it eases, eases up and it's allowed to run on. The other big thing was, if that was in another month, like you're talking about February, March, doing something. Once that ground freezes, there's no place for it to go. We had penetration, that's the Crescent Avenue's uh sands. The big aquifer underneath all of that area up there and the water drains right down. Everybody's sump pump comes on, that's the reason for it. But in August, January, July, the whole summer, your sump pump's never running. But if it was frozen, the water's got no place to go and it all would have been on the surface. And we all would have got flooded out again. But that's, that's the big things why, and the storm sewer system to dump it down there. When we get a real rainstorm, there's a geyser coming out of the, of the storm sewers on Crescent Avenue and Willard Clark's. Avenue when Cedar Brook fills up. So you dump water down those storm sewers in the middle of a flood, you're just gonna have, it's not gonna take a drop.
And that, and that's something that we, uh I brought to Council President's attention at our meeting today was my concern was. We'd have to fully analyze downstream to see whether there was capacity to take that because of your concern was my same concern.
We could never get Con, Conrail to do anything about the pipe underneath. In years, years to come, I mean years ago, that the water came out of the pipe pretty well. And then went over to Manalpon Brook, but somehow, when I went down there a number of years ago with the. Uh like one of the other VAs when we got flooded out pretty bad. And showed him all of the stuff, actually physically took him back there and everything was all jammed in there. Jammed in the pipe going underneath the railroad. The church built a big parking lot, I'm an Alpen Road and extended the parking lot out into where the pipe used to come out. Now the water has to make a left-hand turn coming out. There's another backup, how that was permitted, I don't know. Yes, I will stay and, and, and uh talk, get your information about.
I'd like to see the picture.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just gonna be observant, but he, he can't parade you in my talk. Literally, uh I live on Willard Clark Circle and I've been up against Cedar Brook for years. And when you talk about improving the water, getting more damp, all you're doing is taking a funnel that's already full. And saying, we gotta pour more water and it faster, because there's a four-foot pipe under that levee. I'm calling it a levee, which is the railroad. And when you look at the flood map, the flood map goes out like a pine tree and then all of a sudden it's straight as an arrow. That's the levee, the railroad track and there's only a four-foot pipe under. So if you increase the flow, all you're doing is backing up more. And like you mentioned, natural flow, that levee is not natural, that's not a flood plain, the whole flood plain comes down to a four-foot pipe. And God forbid a plane someday comes down that flow and turns sideways in front of that pipe. And the railroad should be obligated to increase the amount of water that goes under it, even if they did it like on a higher level. For a flood day, right now, if that pipe ever got plugged up, the overflow is detracts. And the houses would be underwater. And the other thing was, years ago, we always had a, a certain amount of rainfall, you had to design a roof board, roof leaders. That's outdated, these rainfalls are beyond that, you got these giant parking lots, warehouses, everything else. They're on a, you know, a, a rainfall thing that's out of date. You gotta make that pipe bigger, if you just add more water, it don't.
Sir, what was your name?
Linus Smith from Willard Clark Circle.
Thomas Bowski, three or four Brunswick Avenue. So like the one gentleman said about the, over on Crescent, that the pipe has collapsed. It's exactly where that was, Bowski's been coming for seven years, these trucks run on that road, how do you think that collapsed? So we have another issue that I'd like to bring before this council again. And I believe it was Sunday or possibly New Year's Day, there was an officer on Brunswick Avenue taking radar. It was a pretty quiet day, I stopped, I talked to him. I advised him that three houses from my house, there's a house was sold. Two seventy-seven is the address, there's a box truck, a commercial box truck, the driver, I thought, well, weeks ago, well, well, they're moving in, well. Looks to me like there's about a couple families living in the house. That's none of my business, cause I don't know anything about the rules or any of that, but. As I pointed out numerous times over and over, the truck is over the four-ton weight limit on the street. And every night is parked, if you go get it right now, it's parked there tonight. It was parked there yesterday morning today and it leaves in the morning and it comes back out, evidently. They think they're gonna run this truck there, so I advised the officer about it. And then again, and I've been hearing this over and over through the years. They obviously don't know the rules of this stuff, I have a CDL in my pocket, I worked for Amara Hills for over twenty years. We took these trucks all over in towns and we had the regulations and I know how it works. The guy just comes there, if you don't catch him, doesn't matter to me, that truck is parked on that property at night, how did it get here? Did it levitate through the air at night? No, it was driven down Brunswick Avenue from one end to the other or Adirondack and parked it. So the officer advised me, well, the owner, the truck, uh gave the guy probably the truck to drive, so he's bringing it home. Oh well, I don't care, he could give him the truck for a ball. He can't bring that truck, it's a commercial vehicle on that street to that house, he's not doing a delivery, which would be drop the delivery and leave. And I keep, this is over and over, how many times have I told you this? Ed Seeling went around and got a bunch of them when I pointed that out when he was begging. I told Jackie about it, she's taught everybody, what, what we're doing now is, and I spoke to Phil Corbocero in detail about this. We write letters to the companies now, so that they'll tell them, if we catch your driver on our streets, we're gonna get. The next couple of times that we catch them that they're not supposed to be here, a ticket, that ain't working. It's back to kid for punching somebody and he keeps doing it, what are you gonna do? Oh, sonny, we're gonna get you, oh, we're gonna play this cat and mouse game? What I need is a good lawyer that when I flip out and I blow a gasket, drop it or whatever, which they would probably love. Well, I'm gonna lawyer, let them handle the whole thing. How many times do I have to come here and tell you this? Here's the plate number and I'm gonna show you, last time I told you, I wanted to show you, only one or two council members look. I'm gonna show you the picture of the truck in New York that you can see. And I have a whole phone, this is, this is my flip phone, this is the new phone.
While you're pulling the picture, can I just ask you a question? Is there a company name on the truck?
Yeah, it's commercial, yeah.
Do you know the name of the company?
No, I didn't go up, there's a, another time that I did it, and I think I had this discussion with Ed. When I went up to walk up to a house and then somebody else was telling me, well, you can't be stopping these people, and I don't stop the truck, I just walk up like. Did I blind my driver? The guy's going by, so I follow him, boy, a couple, an officer can be trapped, and I follow the truck, well, I'm going to the shop right. We don't wanna go around the, the other way, so I can't see the guy? No, I'm going to the shop right, if I see the guy, I can write this plate number down, I hit the light, I'm gonna do it. I'm tired, here's, I have to be the one following some rule to do this, I'm not the police.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was a company name on the truck.
Yeah, there's something, it's something, something walled over something, it's a freight line. And I know from working on trucks, and I'll tell you, here's, I've done this twenty years. This truck is probably gonna be registered, which if they stop them and say, let's see your registration, even if they're legal, it's, it's officer discretion. We cannot order police department to, to alter their operation. Well, say that again, what, what's that called?
We, we, the administration cannot.
Well, administration, council.
Or the council, no one, no one on the, um, the day is here. Can direct the police.
It's officer discretion.
Officer discretion. So if you've had this discussion, you know, achieve that, that's. That's the best that we can do as well.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna go around all the other towns, because I happen to know of Lillian South River and Lillian East Brunswick. And one of the council members told this office, one of his here who resigned, he said, he was a police officer and he said. I'll tell you what, in our town, if I was there, this would have been rented uh already. But once again, somebody probably knows the guy who feels better now, I know that the person who bought this house doesn't even live here, they're in New York. Renting this house, so does this town, when these people buy a house and rent it out, do they go around and check that all the ordered stuff is followed and all? Because they got cars all over the drug, the, the front lawn, which I don't care, I got cars that I want to, but. We've gone by and seen him parked on the sidewalk, working on the car, out in the street, working on the car.
So those, those, um definitely send that information to us when that happens, because it's, it's, because we can send code of course now.
Well, I, I spoke to the police a week or so ago and I called, I asked Paul Philzoff, because I did call in and I spoke to, I believe, is your son a dispatcher one time?
He is now.
Okay, so I always get him on the phone, right away, he was taking care of, he talked or whatever. I called him one day, they put me on hold for a minute of the phone with him, so I called Philzoff, so I left a message, two messages, and I said, call me back. I ain't heard nothing, so was he aware of something? Oh, but, okay, so there you go, they could tell you that, they, they said he's not around. Alright, so here's. So here's the plate number, it's a freight liner XMV J thirty-six. And I know they checked that, put that truck's probably twenty-six hundred, twenty-six thousand pounds at least, depending on what's. Lift gate or whatever options are on it, so do the math. Is that a truck? They had a regular model in like, it was a record guy that had the, uh, uh, record over on Willard Clark. And so like this, um, the gentleman said about the pipe being collapsed, I still see them running out and running down Crescent Avenue. Their own day, exactly, I know, people come to me in shock all the time to tell me, but not getting started about it. Because we don't wanna, the, the Teamsters will get mad at us, remember, it should be hostile.
Uh, how you doing, council? I just wanted to make a comment to. Uh just came here to mention, uh just gonna be short, so not making too long. Um I happened to be at the uh key board council meeting in December on nineteenth, which was very last year of the year. And the residents were very upset about the amount of money that was being spent on attorney fees. And uh just, I noticed that that seems to be the case here as well. Um the common denominator is Ms. Lynn, attorney, both uh, both. The common denominator is Ms. Lynn, attorney for both, uh, both two cities. So I just, part of the, very interested in them. Both towns are in the same spot with that. I just wanted to share, share the comments. And if you're, if that if you're allowing me to speak without asking in prime or personal sense of information that belongs to me, thank you.
Can you think again? Colin Ronco. You're welcome. I was on the D C A website. And from what I understand and from reading it and from some other information that I've gotten when I called D C A, all of our part-time employees, starting in two thousand, November of two thousand and eight, were, are supposed to be enrolled in the pension program if they maintain and make over five thousand dollars a year. So we're supposed to be putting in three point five percent as the town. They're supposed to be putting in five point five percent. So I would like to know why it is that we've had, I don't know, four mayors, hundred and fifty D As, and seventy-two audits since then, and nobody's picked up the fact that our employees are supposed to be in the pension program.
It wasn't picked up by the auditor this year. We have been going through, uh, to basically go through which employees need to have it, making sure who goes into D C R P, uh, because it would be a D C R P enrollment, not hers enrollment. Uh, the, the project is still ongoing to try and figure out how far back legally you have to go. Uh, but my office hasn't yet.
So we only found out about it this year?
I've been here for seven months. I got it after the audit and I started working on it.
Mayor?
It was Brian.
When?
I'm gonna say last year, right before they left.
So he did nothing for you?
Well, we didn't because Brian came in and we, that was one of the things. As soon as the CFO we brought in.
Speaking of the CFO, does CFO have an exemption letter to be in Tennessee?
Yes.
Really?
And we've, we've gotten approval from the, from the D C A.
Is there an exemption letter?
To my knowledge, yes.
So if I overrequested, I'll get that? There's no document saying, so I'm supposed to take the word that there is an exemption for her?
Well, D C R P, or D C A wouldn't allow CFO to, to serve. So she wouldn't be able to sign a, a budget for a town if she didn't have exemption. That's part of, that's part of the checklist.
My question is, if I overrequested, will I get it?
Well, it gets sealed in her personnel file. So if we did receive it, she can't, she can't serve as the licensed CFO unless she, unless she has.
Okay, so you, you want me to take your word for it, is what you're telling me? Because you're not going to present it with a document saying that in fact she is exempted. Why wouldn't I just be able to get it from us? It's the same document. So what?
So employee and personnel information is sealed.
Really?
Yeah, there's a lot of.
That is, that's an exemption. That's saying that she can work for us while she lives in another state.
D C A tells us that we, that she is authorized to work and sign our budget, then we, then the D C A has all of her paperwork and everything that is required by her. We.
But we don't.
We have what we need.
So the law is very clear. You have a year to revise the exemption. I, I have not been in her personnel file recently, so I would have to review it. Um, she was hired prior to me getting here, so I couldn't review it to, to go in. Um, she has a year in order to provide an exemption if, if it's not there. Um, but she wouldn't be permitted. It's a question that they asked me as, as part of submitting the budget on the FAS system. Is that, uh, are they licensed? One, they have to provide their license number. And then do they meet the requirements of the license, which is to be a resident of, of the state, which is a requirement for all public employees unless you have an exemption. So I, I would have been caught by now, but I can, I can certainly review it.
I appreciate that. Um, Nick, back in, I believe it was November, I stood here and I read some information regarding animal control and the fact that one of the animal control officers from New Brunswick does not have a license. Has anybody checked to see if that was the case?
Yeah, I believe we went through. I've had John talk with them, but I mean, we don't maintain their license. We have a contract. We have a contract with New Brunswick, uh, that they would provide us animal control services. So when the state goes to them, they will check and make sure that those people are licensed. Under the requirement of the shared service, they would just have to provide us with licensed individuals. If they're not providing us licensed individuals, then they're in violation of the contract.
So we're gonna get sued because we potentially have somebody that's not licensed because?
We don't get sued because we have a contract that states that they would provide us with licensed individuals.
Okay, but you're supposed to have a copy of their license on file.
We do not maintain it on file. They do. They're not our.
All right, so I overrequested them in October. They do not have a copy of his license on file. Therefore, he's not a licensed animal control officer.
So Spotswood, I.
Yes, he has been to Spotswood.
And I'll address it with their administrator.
I mean, I brought up several issues back in November where I read that, again, and you told me this.
I wasn't.
No, but you told me this prior. So if you'd let me finish talking, that when I asked about the animal control services shared agreement being approved through the Board of Health, you told me that wasn't.
Need to be approved by the Board of Health.
Nick, did I not read that here that night? And we went through the entire thing because there was a memo put out on July that was sent to all of the business administrators and all the administrations that clearly stated, because I read it here, so maybe you should go back and look.
I, I spoke to the head of Department of Health of Middlesex County. They said that no requirement is needed. So then I called D C A.
You just speak to Joneses County.
Have to check with John. We were on a conference call together with that person. So, but I don't know the person's name, but D C A doesn't require, it's home rule. We have a contract, a shared service contract, and it's not that the Department of, of Health could even reject it. We have a standing.
No, but they're supposed to make sure that, according to the memo that was put out by the state, not by the county, that the shared service agreement is sufficient and adequate. They have four animal control officers, two on in the morning and two on at night. That is not sufficient to cover ninety square miles of animal control services.
Who determines that?
The Board of Health. There was a memo put out.
So the Board of Health shut down New Brunswick?
See, I didn't say that. What are you talking about?
So if, if they're not adequate to provide.
You can't have them. If they're not adequate, you can't use them. If they don't have.
You're saying they're not adequate for New Brunswick?
No, I'm saying they're not adequate for the ninety square miles and the six towns that they cover. You cannot, as an animal control officer, it is physically impossible.
Something that New Brunswick would have to address with the state.
No, it's something that you need to address as the shared service agreement. We don't have adequate animal control in Spotswood.
They provide the agreement to us.
We do not have adequate animal control in Spotswood. Period. We don't have animal. It took that dog from Helmeda that was running around for a week. It took animal control over an hour to get down here. Well, that dog was picked up by our police officers while they were out there trying to trap the animal. You have to have adequate animal control. An hour is too long. If we have a dog attack in this town, which we have had, it is too long for animal control to take an hour. And that's if they're not out on another call. That is not adequate animal control under Title Four. Maybe you should read it. No, you haven't. Because if you did, you'd know what I was talking about. You just wanna be a pompous ass. Been sure you sent the state police to my house on that one. Because that got you real far the last time.
Diane Charles with twenty-nine Old Stage Road. Um, back in October, when the P B A did their vote of no conference, I believe that, uh, Mayor Popper stated she had a year to take somebody from acting, uh, say, acting sergeant to then give them the title, the full title of sergeant without the acting in front of it. Um, that would have involved Officer Mayo, who is acting captain. His one-year anniversary of that title was up December eighteen. So I'm wondering if he's maybe given the full title yet.
Oh, for crying out loud. I, I think facts are all. Captain Genovese didn't retire until June first of this year.
Okay, well, there goes another lawsuit.
Hi, Steve Romer. Um, do we have an attorney running out for a bar?
Yes. She will be held over under the public contracts law. She can stay until forty-four thousand. She can be appointed by the mayor.
Are you done? That resolution was just dropped?
It was, but she's still under a public contract law that goes up to forty-four thousand.
That's how late prior to going for a.
So do we have an act, do we have a, a borough attorney right now?
So up until forty-four thousand, she can continue to stay on, even though that.
Without consequences.
Without consequence consent.
So what does that mean?
That means that she, that the mayor can appoint her to stay on as the, um, borough attorney and the labor attorney up until forty-four thousand.
Up to forty-four thousand dollars?
Yes, forty-four thousand. And then after that.
Oh, so she'd be here.
They would need counsel, they would need counsel, uh, approval.
So why don't we have a special, special counsel? Why don't we just have an attorney that we don't even have to have? I'm not talking to you.
Excuse me, sir.
We, we don't have that. We, we cannot appoint. It's the mayor's choice.
The council, the council attorney also?
The borough attorney, the borough attorney and the labor attorney. The, the ma, what, the, the mayor's, um, selection, which was put out here today, even though we voted no on it, she will remain on by, at, at the mayor's choice until forty-four thousand. So, so we haven't gotten a bill from her since September. So I'm not speaking to you. So. Is he a guest here? So we haven't gotten a bill from her since September. So she gets to lay this until whenever. And I go, oh, here's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill. Oh, oopsie. Correct? So I, I did speak with, uh, Brandon earlier with regards to the budget from last year. So the, the money.
I believe we've received invoices, uh, you can accept invoices for a whole year because now the twenty twenty-three budget is in reserve. But technically, you would want to try and receive them in the first three months of the year because you can do transfers at that point. Um, so all professional services have been advised to provide their, their bills within the next three months so we can close out the twenty twenty-three year. Uh, the twenty twenty-four year would mean that, uh, Ms. Flynn is subject to a forty-four thousand cap under the, uh, public contracts law that she was appointed through the power of the mayor of the Q P A.
So we've got, uh, ordinance here to do a monthly invoice instead of a whenever invoice, whenever my.
We, we are urging this one to please, uh, get our bills in on time.
She's not welcome here. I mean, I don't understand the, the deal. I mean, she's protecting the mayor. That's her whole entire job here is to protect the mayor.
So we, as, as I've mentioned, we don't have the ability to do anything further because of the fact that the mayor has, uh, chosen to keep Ms. Flynn on as the borough attorney and the labor attorney up until forty-four thousand dollars. So there's nothing more that we can do about it at this time. I, I find that hard to believe. Um.
That, that's the law. Unfortunately, Mr. Ronco.
Again, I'm not speaking to you. He's in charge. He's in charge of the meeting. You're a guest. Um, see, this one just, I mean, you sent the state police to my house. I mean, shut up, all right?
I said, but this, I, I answered your question. I, I don't know what else you want me to say right now. There's nothing I can do about it.
All right, yeah, I mean, the state troops are at my house and it's visibly sent you. Yeah, you, the mayor. You're the mayor.
Diane Charles with twenty-nine Old Stage Road. Considering past practices with Ms. Flynn's delinquent billing, how are we gonna know when she's reached the forty-four thousand threshold this year?
I could put her on as an employee.
And then we'll know?
And, and we'll set a salary and she'll give me like every other employee in the borough, which.
Wouldn't that be refreshing?
Which we actually can do. So I, I want to actually do that. Um, and she would be the director of wall, which is outlined as a direction.
And he's the director of the wall. She'd be able to be the, the borough attorney for any other municipality in this state, like she is with Keyport and Red Beach.
Just like other, other places within the borough have alternate work as well. It would get support. It would get submitted to us and it would be, you know, approved or denied for her path outside of the company. That happens in every department where there's an outside funding.
And specifically under the law, if Ms. Flynn was an employee of the town, she would not be permitted to be in the pension system if she's doing, uh, personal service contracts in other municipalities. If she was a sole employee to the borough, she would then be permitted to be in the pension system if she wasn't providing services to other, other towns. So that, that's the requirement of the law because of issues that were happening where some, in, in strong mayor forms of government, you do typically see an employee that is paid as the paid attorney employee. Um, and the law changed, I want to say back in twenty-eleven, um, but it doesn't permit them to be in the pension. And it actually can help there.
Okay, well, I think, I hope you've understood that many people are, um, hesitant to believe that we'll know when she hits the forty-four thousand threshold based on past performance. So we need some kind of, uh, guarantee that that will happen, some trigger that will notify you guys.
She wouldn't be permitted to, it's, it's the same as with the other special councils that are brought on, um, and, and that I discussed with council president. If you're staying under the payed plates, seventy thousand five hundred, you're over the payed plate, forty-four thousand. If they bill beyond the forty-four thousand, they can't actually kill it beyond the forty-four thousand. So if you receive the bill, let's say in June, and Ms. Flynn exceeded the forty-four thousand, at that point, she's, she's not permitted to be paid. You're not allowed to issue a deal. Because I don't have, I don't have counsel.
Total cut off at forty-four thousand.
Okay. Is there something in the, in the computer system that will trigger that?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm sure that you're not, when you're, you're subject to.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll get my reading. Hang on, that got me. Um, I don't think this was answered, but what happens when she hits forty-four thousand?
So the, um, we would have to, uh, have another resolution that's presented, uh, for us to approve or to.
But you, you're still at the mercy of whoever she suggests. And if she just suggests Ms. Flynn again, then what happens? Like, now you understand me. Yeah, like, how, how does this get resolved?
Well, you could go through case law. There's, I mean, I wouldn't want to speculate on who that would then probably be litigation. But under the strong mayor form of government, the mayor selects the profession, provides consent. Counsel can't laterally, um, suggest someone without mayor consent. You could go through the D C A's office specifically and, and request, but then you would need to go through Q P A, make sure that it's a budget item.
Adam, the microphone, please.
Again, my god, could you be anywhere?
So basically, if, if that's the case, then, uh, we have to look into it. I, I can't really give you an answer right now. But, um, my assumption is that if, um, that's the case, then the mayor would have to then present another option in terms of the attorney, um, to, for council to, to, to approve.
Okay, um, I, I would hope that that would happen at that point, meaning this is absurd. This is, this is really crazy. Um, and it's a huge waste of precious time that could be spent on doing other things. Thank you.
Hey, Richie Lataud Drive. First of all, happy new year. Second off, congratulations to Brandon and Danny. And third thing is, what the last two speakers spoke about is exactly what I brought up by changing this to strong council, weak mayor form of government. This is a prime example of putting everything in one person's hand and you not having shit to say about it.
Dan, my name is one twenty-nine, Burlington Avenue. I apologize in advance.
I apologize in advance, uh, in comparison, it would be very boring. So, um, I am the, uh, I'm a member of the Spotswood Board of Education. Last time was our reorganization meeting. I was reelected, uh, back in Mr. supporting for was attended. Uh, I was reelected as president last night as such. I am a liaison for the town council, so I just wanted to tell them and reintroduce myself. Uh, if I could echo, um, a sentiment that Councilman Kramer brought up earlier regarding our, our first responders, uh, police officers in town. Earlier this year at our first varsity football game on Saturday, uh, it was a very, very hot day. Not a lot of, of coverage. Uh, one of our elderly fans had a heat-related emergency. Uh, and we could not be happier, uh, and more grateful to the police officers and first responders there that day, uh, who were able to take care of, uh, the fan, and, uh, luckily, they were back the next week cheering on the team, so, uh, just to echo that sentiment. Um, a couple of things, our, our referendum that I spoke about the last time did pass. I want to thank Miss Service. Um, it's hard enough being a borough clerk and running one election in a year, with everyone having a special one thrown in just two months before general election. So to honor all the, uh, election workers, thank you very much. Uh, and also want to thank, uh, we have a director, Jose Rivera, with the impending weather coming in this weekend. Uh, he's been great communicating with Superintendent Peabody uh, and our leadership teams to ensure that, uh, if the weather does hit, our staff and students will be able to, um, have the safest approach to school, uh, if possible that day, so thank you. Our young director, and, uh, that was about it. So thank you very much. Happy new year. Congratulations on the baby.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
That might be the last one. Hey, so, Ben. I forgot what I was talking about.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, uh, head to the A M Street, Spotswood, New Jersey. First of all, say, Mr. Fitzgerald, right? Is that your name, sir?
That's correct.
Great idea about the controlled fire. That does work. I've seen that happen in a lot of downtown called E and B, which do a lot of control fires, to control water flow and damage. It's a good idea on the PS. Might be something you want to look at. Uh, second off, I'm just gonna throw my head in the rain for one second on the, being a former councilman and former mayor. Um, council does have advice and consent. So when you said before, they have no power, they do have power. They have advice and consent power. Consent in the dictionary means yes or no, period. As for what's going on here with yes or no, yes or no, you actually can carry on for a while. My personal opinion, I don't believe for one minute that our attorney would want to be a public employee in the town. So I think it would restrict how much money she could make. That's just my opinion. Most important thing, what, what's on doesn't work. I'm kinda like a little thirsty there, but you know, they tell me it hasn't worked in quite a while. This year, this is personal now, um, my son had his first child, so I have my first grandson. Really happy about it, but what it did to me the other day when I was holding him, I looked at him and I said to myself, uh, I can't change the world. I can't fix the world. Probably can start here. So I'm gonna be here a lot now. And I will have issues that I'm gonna bring up, and if someone catches a fire back, go ahead, but if you do, I'm gonna come back three times, sorry. Because I've been nice up to now. And I don't like being loud and nasty, because it gets nothing but everybody upset. It makes these meetings twenty hours too long. Okay, so with that being said, I'm back. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations on your grant.
Make the motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Take a motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Aye.